Okay, so we've got our work session that's beginning here at eleven o'clock. And so the-
So what I have in front of you is what I had emailed out with me, except I updated a couple of things based on feedback from Linda and- This is the stuff that you guys need to look at and consider that this will be, this will be in front of you, most of it, before your reorg meeting. So, um, the first one is a list of your current and upcoming board appointments. Item number one. And so currently you still have three vacant positions for mental health. You just appointed Laura Jensen this morning for reappointment. You will have two that will be coming up. It'll be expiring for the planning commission at the end of December.
I think I might have two people for that.
And then, um, based on the letter that I send out, which is item number two, this will go out this afternoon to all the departments that you appoint board for. It'll be updated for 2018. So you have DES, community development, job and family services, and the, um- So you have fair housing and local revolving loan and revolving loans that will be, or until get reappointed during reorg. So that takes care of one and two. Item number three, your stiak, is the current resolution for your designated powers for your county administrator. And these are the items that he can, under advisement by the board, under your direction and supervision, he can approve outside of session that your board's on. So you need to take a look at that list and see if there is anything that you want to take off of it, add to it. Number four is the letter, the second letter that will go out this afternoon, once it's updated with any changes, for your departments that use credit cards. So this is the letter that they have to, that they get from me and then they have to fill this form out. And that has to be approved during reorg for the credit card authorization for all of 2018. And one that has never had one before, and we do have a couple that got new ones this year. And then there's another, like, the officials office that is also looking at getting credit cards that will get, come before you for approval for next year. Number five is the first three pages. I didn't include any of the credit card authorization because we don't have them yet. But number five is the long list of items for the actual reorg meeting. That includes the appointment of president, vice presidents, your meeting schedule, whether you want to make any changes to your meeting schedule. Currently, we have it set at every Tuesday at nine o'clock with adjustments made for Thursday meetings due to holidays, with the additional many, regular meetings being scheduled as needed. And then page two of that is all of the current boards that you currently sit on have to be reappointed for next year. So that's something that you guys need to look at, plus your staff appointments. I'm waiting to hear back from the county engineer's office on any changes to the bite rate for your drainage engineer and, um-
Okay.
We did contact Mr. Manley, our ABRIS, and he wishes to continue.
Good.
Um, the, in the last couple of years, you have increased his hourly compensation based on what you've done for the employees. So that would change him from twelve dollars to twelve dollars and thirty-six cents per hour for next year. The mileage rate is up in the air at this point because there has been a change from there. I don't have yet on mileage. And whether you, your prevailing wage coordinators are currently Jerry and Nick, and whether you want to make changes to that or leave them in there. So these are the items that I have in front of you that you guys can discuss anything, give me direction on. Cannot make any decisions today.
No.
You can just discuss.
The work station.
Well, I think for the plant, for the, uh, health, uh, I'm sorry, mental health, I think we should put a, put a motion in for next week to, to, to advertise that. So we could try to get some applications coming in for that. Because that one there, we've got one, two, three people. And we need to definitely, definitely look at that for, for that. As far as Laura Jensen, we didn't-
I think we have a request for that, don't we? We have resume for somebody, no?
We have two, we have two applications that have come in for consideration, um-
But nothing fresh.
Yeah, one, one, I know the one lady served before.
No, well, no, they, the two recent ones that came in, which is, um-
But I think the one that, that applied was, was actually one of the clients, I believe.
Yeah. What about the library? Can we get, I mean, is, do we have, uh, nothing open on that library?
No. Your, your next library doesn't expire until the end of eighteen.
For planning commission, I've got two people I've been talking to that they would probably be interested to do that.
Have they submitted applications yet?
Not yet, no.
I will go back through the stack that I have, applications I received from mental health, and I will resend them to all of you, the two recent ones, in addition to the two that we had previously that you looked at before, but I didn't-
But, yeah, just so that we could try to get some, some interest in that, uh, in that position. And then maybe if we, if, you know, I don't know, maybe do we, do we do a, do we do an ad that actually would encompass both, both positions? If we wanted to look at a couple more people for planning also?
Good.
We have done ads in the past, and four, three years' ads.
Nice to be gets her some different diversity, you know? I think there's a lot of people from Chesterlin, I think, you know, maybe get more, you know?
Tracy's from where?
Auburn.
Auburn, yeah.
Kathy from Chester.
Chester. You know, kind of hit all the four corners or whatever, if they were, you know?
Maybe reach out to the, reach out to the zoning inspectors and have them ask their zoning commission, their Board of Appeals, their zoning commission, are there any, are there any interest on your board's for you to be considered for this?
There you go. Good.
Because those are the kind of background I think you want to be at least talking to.
Okay, no, that sounds really good.
What about the, um, so the mental health has been vacant for a while, it looks like. And what, what's been the, you know, the problem there? It seems like we have a lot of turnover, you know, or get, it's hard to get people to do it, or-
Yeah, it's tough to get the volunteer.
Volunteer positions oftentimes are tough generally.
Right. But, yeah, so we, so you're thinking advertise for mental health?
Yeah. So if we could advertise for mental health, we could put something in there maybe as a blurb, you know, for, for the, if we're going to utilize the paper for space to try to do that, we might as well get most bang on the buck and just say, these are the positions that you can, you know, get involved with your county or something. Making something other, I don't know if there's something legal that it has to say public notice or something, or can it just be an ad that's, that's appealing to people to come in and say get involved?
Yeah.
You're not happy with government, become part of the solution.
Yeah, yeah, it's easy from the peanut gallery, right?
Yeah, right, right.
So that'll be good. And then, uh, so, so, so that takes care of that. Uh, let's see here, committee appointment, uh-
You don't worry about number two, is that just a letter that gets sent out for your, and your appointments?
For number three, I, to be quite honest with you, you know, we, we've been fine tuning this as we, as we've been going, actually Skip was, uh, you know, was, was a big part of some of these responsibilities of getting this created. And I don't really see that it's, if it's not broke, why fix it? It's, if we need to change something down the road-
You mean Dave?
Yeah, for, for, for situations of approval. I think that Dave has been doing a good job and he's been doing a great job keeping us abreast on, on stuff. If there's a decision that has to be made and it wants to, and there's a little bit of uncomfort, I, I, I see really no issues with this unless you guys do.
Well, I think, I think it's been working pretty well, actually.
And it saves a lot of, lot of, lot of time of, of us dealing with a lot of, uh-
A little, like the routines, yeah.
The only thing that I would probably say that we maybe want to look at is some of these service agreements that are coming through from, um, water resources. That's always one that, that is something that you can probably, I mean, here's, bottom line is, you've had a lot of experience back-
Well, now we have Adrian here too.
And with Adrian, that I think that some of those, um, my whole thing is, is I don't, if, if the directors are here waiting to come up and, and do this, they're not running their business.
Right.
And, and for them to sit down here for some, you know, not to exceed a two thousand dollars as a fire, as an emergency thing, and you can just rubber stamp that yourself, you know what the deal is, our prosecutor's reviewing it, why does it have to come in here and waste, waste their time? I don't think it's necessary.
Your, your current limit on your service agreements is, uh, they're, um, the amount of ten thousand dollars per year or less, up to and including multi-year service contracts that do not exceed the ten thousand dollar per year limit. So what you would have to look at is whether you, we would be able to increase that dollar amount from ten thousand to twenty thousand, or that would be the only thing that you could change that would allow Dave to, um-
Cover some of those.
Cover additional service contracts.
Why don't we check with Laura and see what that can go to?
She's the one that gave me the ten thousand to begin with, so-
You know, with, with, in the current light of our situation, what's going on right now with our IT department, and, um, you know, it's made me a lot more hypersensitive and aware of what's coming across my desk, you know, and looking at it differently now, right?
Absolutely.
I don't know if I, wouldn't say I don't trust everything I see, but I don't take it for granted, you know? Especially these consulting agreements, like, I don't know, you know, I would certainly say going forward, you know, for a consulting agreement, it's hard to prove, you know, show me what you did. It's like some guy said, move this switch to that switch and, you know, there you go, charge, there's thirty grand, or, you know, I mean, no, I don't know. So I have a hard time with those, you know, as far as any agreements that we should be reviewing.
That was my biggest point of contention with, with water resources, of them coming in with these outside agencies that were doing the, the, the planning for them.
Engineering, yeah.
It's like, really? You know, the one year, I think we were over three hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, you know, in outside contracts. Now it's in-house.
Remember the one, when you first started, the one year did it, the one engineer did it wrong and there was a problem in Chester and they had to put the wood- You had to put the wood on there to get the water level up so the system would work. But we got some money back from that engineer for that.
Right. But I, so I, I think that, you know, we can, we, we really, I agree, you know, we have to watchdog some of this stuff, but, um, you know, I think that the beauty with us here is, is this goes through a lot more channels of any kind of issues getting, getting, you know, spotted immediately, you know, and, um, but, but, yeah, I, I think that that's good.
So, okay, so, so as far as Dave's responsibilities, we're gonna, um, or ability to approve, I mean, authorizing, just keep it same.
Well, we'll look at the service contract and see if it can be pulled-
I was gonna say, that'd be the one that I'd question, yeah. And maybe, I don't know even about bumping it up, giving, like, you would just brought up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know, maybe we ought to revisit that line and see, is there another check in there? I don't know. I mean, I think it's been working for good, we trust you and-
The one thing with the county credit cards-
So far I haven't seen any outside businesses, uh?
With number four, um, I think that, I think that the one thing with the county credit cards that we need to do is, is I think that we just need to do where, I, I think as far as for the authorization, instead of having these huge elongated reads, is for you to be able to have one list, this is it, and it's done. Because it's like, you know, we don't want to really be here for three days and I don't want you to have to spend all your time doing all that work and reduplicating it. For what? It's stupid, so, um-
Yeah, currently the, the section of credit card authorization is five pages. Because all of my motions is eight pages long, and you have one story.
So I think that Christine knows what to do, you know what to do as far as short, you know, shortening that up and we, and the end goal is the same.
Keep it simple.
Yes.
Um, so number five, we've got, uh, so for number five, we've got the president, vice president, and, and then sitting commissioner. To be quite frankly honest, I don't, I, I have no issues to hear whatever you guys want to hear. I know that, um, it seems like we've, we've had a, a, a good mix of, of experience and moved forward. We had started to do a two-year, two-year deal last year as far as president and then switching the vice president and, and commissioner's seat. If you guys want to continue that, I'd be glad to stay on as president, move Tim to vice president, and then Skip as the sitting commissioner. And then next year, obviously, I would be the sitting commissioner and then Tim would be president and, and go from there. So whatever you guys want to do, I'm, I'm totally fine with. If you guys want to bump me out, that's good too. I, I, it's, um, it's-
And I'm good with that, I mean, I don't, I don't really care.
Totally, totally up to you guys.
This is, that seat's closer to the door, and so there's an advantage. I like being next to Dave.
You can all, I, I don't really care.
Are you going to the middle then?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't really care. So, have you ever been president?
Yeah, it was the first two years.
Okay.
So I've already had the luxury of-
Yeah, that's fine, two years, two years, two years, okay, that's fine, I, I'm, whatever you guys want to do.
Be able to do is, is move you up, unless you wanted to stay with Dave, whatever, listen, it's totally-
I'm gonna have to put a helmet on if I sit in the middle.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we can keep the gavel in the middle.
It's totally up to you, whatever.
You can wear, you can wear a striped shirt and a whistle, how about that?
That'd be good, yeah.
So it's, it's totally up to you guys, I, I'm fine with-
Yeah, I don't really care. Why don't we move Tim over here and I'll sit over here, because it's closer to the door.
You're gonna drive Dave nuts. So the other thing then is, is as far as the positions, I, obviously, I know that Tim has a, has a heartfelt place with family first and obviously he's doing a good job with that.
I'd like to continue on at least another year if possible.
Yep, for sure. Tim, or Skip is doing ADP board with the current stuff that's going on over there. I do not want to change that right now in process because he's been involved with that from the beginning. So I would say for sure, family first and those, I wouldn't touch, um-
What about border revision? You know, I did that for a year, does anyone else have interest in it, or? I don't mind doing it.
We can flip a coin.
Next year, I'll tell you, the only thing I would say, next year is gonna be a lot more interesting than the year I had, because with, you know, with the tax change, yeah, oh, yeah.
And there's a proposed, there's a proposed bill out there.
There's thousands-
Given that Tim's got all this experience with that right now, I think we have it in the air and, uh-
Well, you are the alternate.
I know, I know. But it's never been executed, I've never had to show up. No, it's a good way to meet a lot of people in the community.
I always enjoyed looking at the garages, you know, all the guys on the board, you got a nice garage there, you know?
I was on the border of revision for two years, had the luxury of meeting with a lot of people.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll stick with it, I'll stick with it. But we're not making decisions, are we today?
No, I'm just, I'm just taking notes.
Just junior school.
Community corrections.
So, you know, I, I mean-
That's all three of you.
You, you know, to be quite honest with you guys, I mean, if, if it's a situation where, unless somebody's got an issue of, to, to keep it somewhat simple, I think that it's been fairly smooth this year. I mean, unless there's something that you want to ask to get taken off of, then fine, if I'm not, I-
Yeah, it seems to be, I mean, I'm comfortable with-
Dave, is there any concerns on your side? I mean, there's nothing, you know, I think that it's pretty flexible.
To Wacca, they're gonna change it for us, right?
Yeah.
So, so.
Well, you're moving up the chain in that.
Oh, yeah.
You're moving that, that secretary position.
I'll be, I'll be running that then.
You'll be running that, you're up there.
This is the new McCall.
I'll be, I'll be able to say, you know, thirty-
In which case they, they put you through the brainwashing process, so the next thing you know.
I know, my buddy from a din-
You get the shock treatments, they flip the-
My buddy from a dinah got brainwash.
They put those, uh, they put the clips on your ears next year, then get the shock treatments going.
Yeah.
How do you get to be Valery McCall?
Oh, yeah, just not show up.
He has to get a wardrobe.
You can, you can just, yeah, you can be the president.
Oh, get in the war.
Yeah.
Now, Tim got rolled into, he's on the executive committee, so he got rolled into the secretary position. Once you get into the secretary position, now you roll up through the-
I'm moving on up.
You're moving on up, through the neighborhood.
You know about the Urnfeld report, award, right? The Walter Urnfeld Award?
Yes, I do, I do, yeah.
His motto was, it's, uh, good to be important, but it's more important to be nice.
Well, his one of the best commissioners maybe, that, that was here at one time, was, I think, a president to give you a-
Oh, yeah.
Walk you through the, uh-
And it's a bell. Well, secured over, secured, secured over thirty million dollars for John County in her campaign literature.
There you go.
Yeah. I was like, wow, where that went.
So good, so that, that'll be, uh, simple enough, and then Christine is, I think that-
The only thing that'll change really would be your, um, the primary and alternate will change based on the, the change in your vice presidency seat, so there may be some adjustments on the alternate, um, from where we are to next year. The only question that I have is you need to be thinking about your alternates for Wacca, whether you want to remain the same or if you want to make changes.
I'll keep mine the same.
I'll keep mine the same, too.
Okay, so, you have Shane for Tim and Joe, I hope you-
Okay, I, I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, she's over here, she does a nice job when she goes there.
That's the first weekend in January, so it fits to Friday, so we'll be going down-
That's, that's pretty much all I, I really wanted to make sure you guys have the opportunity to see, so we kind of-
Friday night is the township.
So what we'll do is, um, you voted today during regular session to do your reorg at the first meeting on Thursday, the fourth. So you'll, uh, not have to come in on Monday and the eighth, we'll have regular session on Tuesday, the ninth. And that will stay in line with what the auditors have sent out for the financials for the beginning of the year. I will put on for, um, the request for Dave to have permission to approve financials outside of, um, regular session for next year before the end of December, as there will be some financials that will have to be approved that first day back of January.
Yep.
Yeah, so, I gotta call Paul, I knew you were going to say that. The only other thing that I think we need to do is, is come in January or February, I think what we need to do is, we need to, uh, we need to schedule, um, we need to schedule a work session with every department and, and with their main senior staff or whatever to, because we've got some, some opportunities of, uh, some retirements that have already kind of been, been, you know, put out there with, that are coming, so that we don't get caught off guard. We need to start to have a plan. And I think January first, we need to, to be more engaged with some of those guys on a one-to-one so that all three of us are on-
Ignoring the succession of those retirements in June and, yeah.
So that we don't get slapped in the face with something last minute and all of a sudden we're sitting there surprised. And then I think at that point, we try to figure out, what do we do? How do we move forward?
Do you want to work out and getting those scheduled, like following your regular sessions around your home stuff?
Yeah, that's, that'd be fine.
Like what we did today? Following your regular work session, you have a little bit of a break and then go into your work session? And then do like a priority of departments based on the ones that you know for sure that you have like potential retirements coming down the path and, and that stuff.
And I think we want Adrian involved also, you know?
Oh, definitely.
Because of the fact that obviously it's gonna, you know, impact budgetary issues and stuff, you know, just so that we have all players engaged and so there's, everybody kind of the right knows what the left is doing.
Yeah, good, good idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, with Dave, I'll work on trying to compile a letter that we'll send out to the departments and what you're talking about at the director's meeting.
And then what do you think, maybe we could do, you know, for like one, uh, you know, one, 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 one per meeting or something, you know? And that way it's not-
Well, I mean, you prioritize them, there's some, there's some departments where it's probably not immediate or pressing issue, but there's others where it definitely is.
Yep.
Right. That's what I'm at, but knowing what you have coming down the pike of stuff, your senior staff and stuff like that. I'd start with, I would say, community development, building.
Right, that's what I would say, you know, because I know that Anita's, you know, probably at a point where she could retire here soon, so, and Mike Mahalson, I think, is the same thing, so-
Same thing, Steve.
Dave Dietrich, same thing, yeah, so we can get-
Linda, Linda, maybe, I hope not, but maybe.
We gotta get an assistant administrator in here.
So you also want to schedule one with planning commission then as well?
Yeah, I think so, yep.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, and those are the three that I'll start with, is community development, planning and building, and then we'll move down through the list, um, archives, county home, and all the rest of your, your regular departments under your higher management.
Because I really think that 2018, we need to kind of try to figure out a plan too with this county home, of figuring out, what do we do? What do we do, do we, you know, how do we, it's big, it's a big, it's a big, it's a big dollar to the county. And so, that and, um-
Um, you, you, there was one other thing about the board appointments, you know, you made out that book, did you guys see the book that Christine made?
Yep.
And I would just say again, stress, you know, we need to be, I know it's hard to be thought, but we gotta put some thought into these appointments instead of, you know, I think maybe in the past, it's just been like a warm body and it's come back to bite us.
It has.
You know what I mean?
Yes.
You know?
Library is a perfect example of it. And I can kick myself on that because I, you know, I was a little bit of a minority on that one decision, you know, two of, you know, two against one, and it put, uh, you know, puts sometimes people in that maybe is-
Oh.
That's a lengthy term.
Yeah.
Three years is a long time.
Yeah, so we, I mean, that would just be, just a comment, you know? Just, you gotta really try and find the right people, you know, that are in it for the right purposes.
If we come up with some kind of a unified, you know, recruitment process and maybe like the next township association meeting, ask for some time to talk about it. Because that's, that's like the farm team, that's where you got people that are engaged at the local level.
Yeah.
And a lot of this resonates, good experience coming up here when you got that township.
And I, I have to check too, because I, I know that Bob Rokish went over in Chesterlin. If he does, I, I don't, is there a conflict with that? We would have to check with the planning.
Oh, I think they're-
He checked on that and he said that there wasn't.
Oh, okay, all right. So I was gonna say, we would have three, three planning commission if he were-
I think he's okay, I think he's okay, I'm not sure though. I don't know, being a trustee and a planning commissioner, I don't know.
So I didn't know, I don't know either, I asked him about it.
I think they're reviewing it or something.
Okay.
Somebody, you know, attorney or general.
Usually attorney general will make an opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna put a question mark out here.
It just came out.
So that would be three then, that would be raised, I mean, that's a, so, yeah.
Okay, I'll put a, I put a question mark out here, um, I'll follow up with Laura.
And then the only other one too that I would almost say is, is maybe to try to have, uh, you know, I think Skip's got the best relationship with him, it's Chester, you know, he seems like he's not really, you know, as engaged, like, you know, he doesn't, I mean, has a hard time getting there or he's got-
Yeah, he comes to some of the meetings, um, I've only seen about once or twice. No, he's, he's come to a number of, but you could, and some of them that, but-
But I don't want to reach out to him.
He actually, I mean, I think it's valuable to have somebody from the Amish community on the board.
Yeah, but, I'm just saying, but if they want to-
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, you might want to talk to them maybe and, and just ask them if he really wants to do it or not. And then if he doesn't, then that'll be, uh, you know, I'll find some more, so then, yeah. Okay. So there's no other board appointments coming in in eighteen then, other than that? That would have been it?
She's got the list.
That was it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I updated it because we took off, um, we did the public defender commission and, um, one of the elements I did, I took off here because we already done it, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, this was, this was current.
Okay.
So I will update your meeting schedule and I will get that on for you guys to approve then, the full year schedule like you did last year, um, scheduling the holidays.
And the meeting is good, you guys are good with the meeting, it's good, everything is good. And then, uh, you know, like for next Thursday, I, Notre Dame doesn't, will not allow you to open the doors before seven-thirty, so. So as soon as I have Nicole at the school, I'll be there, so I'll be, you know, late for that meeting.
What about on, um, what about on planning commission days? Should we, um, you know, bump that back or this meeting, is that too cumbersome or should we?
You guys moved your planning commissions from evening to morning.
Maybe we could move it on those days, that's probably a good idea, we could do it at nine-thirty.
Yeah, that way we can give some more time.
Yeah, just to run out of time and-
Why don't we find out and do that then? We'll do, we'll, we'll have the meetings on those days start at nine-thirty.
That's probably a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Maybe you need a little more time.
What day is that?
What day is Thursday? First Monday, or first Tuesday of every month.
Is it nine-thirty?
Eight-thirty, seven-thirty.
But we're, we're talking about the, this next year.
It's just that typically they, they're not able to get through everything they need to do there to be over here at nine, if they start at seven-thirty. We're talking about pushing the meeting, this meeting back at least a half hour We're talking about pushing the meeting, this meeting back at least a half hour on the days when there's a planning meeting before that.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's probably a good idea.
Yeah, no, I like that, that's good.
So the second, second Tuesday of every month, then we'll, we'll start at nine thirty.
Yep.
Okay, I'll have to write that provision into the, the meeting schedule and then, so that will get updated.
Okay, and then you, and then, I don't know if you still have something for night meetings? I mean, if we see fit, like we did for water, for that USGS stuff, we could always plan something. There was actually a planning commission meeting that night though, right?
Yeah.
But if we need to, we can.
It says, or to schedule any additional regular meetings and to make the required number of meetings for the year, so.
And then, you know, something that we, we had talked about years ago was the possibility of possibly having our, our meeting, and I'm totally up to it if you guys wanted to do it every once in a while, to do it in a different venue.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
You know, and we could say we'll just, you know, maybe ask, reach out to some of the townships and say we, you know, we'll be able to come down there and do our meeting at, you know, maybe before or after your meeting and then just that way we have the ability of, you know, somebody can't drive all the way from Bainbridge here or something and we could maybe do it in conjunction with their meeting or something, so I'm totally up to that if you guys wanted to do anything like that.
Any suggestions, yeah, yeah, whatever.
And then, I'm trying to think if there was something else.
We just have to know ahead of time because we have to do it by resolution because we're changing location.
Oh, right.
So like when we do the, we have to do a resolution, changing location for the, timing is not.
That's only a few days ahead, I mean, worst case scenario.
Yeah, you don't have to establish the game.
Then.
Right, no, I mean, as, as they come up, we'll do the, the resolution to change location.
I was contacted yesterday by Nancy MacArthur, she wanted to know if we wanted to do some kind of a county commissioners, questions and answer type of thing, meet and greet or something.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I said I don't have a problem with it, but I don't know if we're legal to do that or not, so we would have to check.
Probably have to be in session or something.
Yeah, because she wanted to have.
Well, as long as we're not making decisions.
Yeah, as long as we're not talking about county business, I think, okay, we check with Laura about it.
Well, if you're responding as individual, if you're participating in an event, like going to convention, you know, you're, you're responding as individual commissioners, you're not making decisions, you're not delivering.
So I told her that I would get back with her if you guys had an interest in it, in doing that.
She called me too, and I think it was something like, maybe in like February or something, March, you know, she said pick a date.
So you guys don't have a problem?
No, it's like with a coffee con, conversations or something, or, yeah, so, that'd be fine.
So that's, that and then I'm trying to think if there's anything else.
Did you guys want to look at scheduling work sessions to go like with your, some of your, your hot topic things that you guys have been working on?
I think we could almost decide, put them on a day as needed basis, aren't that right?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
But that's something to, to consider.
Then I'll go back through the, you know, the priorities list and kind of revisit that and send along to you guys and say, you need some of the things you want to either schedule for a discussion session or have a work session fleshed out a little bit ahead of time.
Okay, easy enough.
That was all I had, just wanted to be able to get the ball rolling and, you know, keep the process going for next year.
Okay, fair enough, easy enough.
All right.
All right, well, good, thank you.
So if you're good, I just.
So we had to get the motion.
Solution, yep.